This is Monday, April 15th, 2013. It is 7:30 PM. Room 4 Riverside Township Hall, 27 Riverside Road. We have two meetings, actually, that will be taking place this evening. First will be a public hearing. And the purpose of this public hearing, it has just one item on the agenda, and that is the presentation of the Riverside Central Business District Plan. We will then open the meeting to discussion and any questions by the village board or by our residents. We will then close that meeting and proceed to the regular meeting that is scheduled for this evening. And at that meeting, we will conduct our normal business for the evening, but we will also have on that agenda a resolution to consider adoption of the Central Business District Plan, which is the subject of this first public meeting. So with that, I would ask our village clerk, Kathy Haley, to please call the role for this public meeting.
President Gorman.
Here.
Trustee Reynolds.
Here.
Trustee Shevitz.
Here.
Trustee Sashis.
Here.
Trustee Dallering.
Here.
Village manager, Galera.
Here.
Village attorney, Lance Alina.
Here.
Village attorney, Michael Mard.
Here.
Village clerk, Kathy Haley, also present. Not with us this evening, trustee Sussman and trustee Souths.
Thank you. So we have a quorum, so we shall proceed with this public hearing. First off, I would invite everyone to please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance. I will ask trustee Shevitz to please lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Just in the way of a brief introduction, over the past 12 months, there has been a planning process that has went on in the village led by a steering committee composed of representatives of the village commissions and the Riverside Chamber of Commerce. Residents, business owners, and other stakeholders have participated in development of a plan through three public meetings which have taken place over the last year. The Central Business District Plan, which will be presented this evening, may be revised as a result of this public hearing. Anyone who's interested to comment, of course, will be welcome to speak. So first up, we are going to have the plan, the final version of the plan, presented to us, presented to the village board, presented to the community, by the two, our primary movers, shakers, I don't want to call you authors, because this is all of our plan, not just yours. But from the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning is senior planner Trevor Dick and associate planner Nora Beck, so I will turn it over to you guys.
Good evening, everyone. How's that? Perfect. Good evening, everyone. Hopefully you can hear me okay. Thank you very much, village president, board of trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. As President Gorman said, Nora and I are thrilled to be here this evening to present to you the key recommendations of the Central Business District Draft Plan. And it's been a real honor working with you and the community. And as President Gorman said, we really do feel like the author is the plan. This is your plan, this is the community's plan, and it's really up to you to make sure that the elements in this happen. So that's even better to make sure that it is the community's plan right from the beginning. Next slide. So this evening, I wanted to do three things for you. The first is to provide you a little bit of background about the plan, why the village is undertaking this project. The second is to talk about the planning process that was used to create the document. And lastly, I'm going to turn over to Nora, and she's going to highlight for you the key recommendations of the draft plan. It's approximately a 90-page document, there's been a copy on the village's website, but what we're going to try and do, instead of trying to get in every page, we're going to touch on the big issues, the big recommendations, and the implementation strategies that we recommend the village undertake. Okay? So the first thing I wanted to talk a little bit about is the background, a little bit about CMAP. The Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning is the official planning agency of northeastern Illinois. One of the biggest documents that CMAP has put out in the last several decades was the Go-To 2040 Plan. And one of the recommendations of that Go-To 2040 Plan, I'll back up a little bit. The 2040 Plan is the first regional planning document since 1909 for the Chicago region. And CMAP looks after the land use, transportation, development, and preservation of all seven counties in the Chicago area. One of the key recommendations of that document was CMAP realized it's up to local municipalities to better our region. So what CMAP did is they applied for and received a grant from HUD to pay for and create a local technical assistance program. What that means for the village of Riverside is that we've been working with you over the last 10 or 12 months free of charge. I used to be in a private consulting world, I never got to use the word "free" very often. So, but it truly is a free exercise. There was approximately 234 municipalities that applied for this grant. The village of Riverside was one of the first in the entire region to be successful in getting this. So congratulations to staff for submitting and receiving this grant. The purpose of the Riverside Central Business District Plan, the last plan for the Central Business District, I'm going to call it CBD, easier for me to say, it was done in 2006. Since that time, we all know there's been a lot of changes in the economy, but there was also some public concerns about that document that we heard. And that was two of the biggest reasons why the village decided to update the Central Business District Plan, to provide a vision that recognized the importance of the area, the historic preservation, but also trying to revitalize it and bring some retail, for example, that the community wanted, into the Central Business District area. Excellent. As President Gorman said also at the beginning, we did not do this alone. Every month, we met with a steering committee, that here are the members of the steering committee, that almost every committee or commission in the village was represented. It was our sounding board. We had a lot of meetings back and forth, are we on the right track, what are your ideas? And this was an excellent group, because they really knew the Central Business District and provided a lot of good feedback. You can see those commissioners, the people from the business community, economic development, et cetera. Next slide. So we would use a checks and balance with that steering committee, and then for the remainder of the community process, over the 10 or 12 months, we had numerous outreach activities. The 10- or 12-month process was based on public input. The public engagement was the foundation of the process. Here are some of the seven higher level, if you will, outreach activities that we did. We had tremendous input, we had tremendous attendance at almost every meeting, and I think that should be something that, you know, a pat on the back, if you will, for the village. It's true, Nora and I say this all the time, how passionate residents and business owners are of Riverside, and it was true in the amount of people that came out to the meetings, and also the quality of information, that that visioning exercise that we had upstairs here, the, when we broke everybody up into small groups, we had lots of maps and markers, just the ideas that came out of those exercises were phenomenal. One thing I wanted to highlight for you, this is something that's unique, that hasn't been done by CMAP or the local technical assistance program yet, and it's been done since this exercise, but this was the first community where we did a kiosk, and we put it in the library, and we had a tremendous amount of people that participated and used, as you can see here, dots on the downtown area, and every dot has some points and some information. And that was something else that with all the other more traditional visioning workshops, we incorporated into the recommendations of the draft plan. You can see here, we had 523 unique visitors that prioritized key issues, and the CBD placed comments on the interactive map, which is tremendous, and it made our boss happy too, that we were using technology and it was really successful. The next section now, I'm going to turn over to Nora, and she's going to talk a little bit about the existing conditions. She's going to highlight some of the big ones that will help create the foundation for the recommendations on how to solve these issues. Like I talked earlier, it's a 90-page document, there's probably 30 pages of existing conditions in there. We've also presented a standalone document that is on the website, you can take a look at, but we wanted to highlight some, a few of the big ones, and that will help set the stage for the recommendations. So with that, I'm going to turn over to Nora.
Thanks, Trevor. I was actually going to skip the existing conditions analysis, because I think the Riverside residents really know what's going on. At all the public meetings, everybody knew that every inch of every block. And so we gathered a lot of information, and I'd like to switch now to the draft Central Business District Plan. So based on the existing conditions analysis, the public meetings, the conversations with the stakeholders and the steering committee, Trevor and I first drafted a recommendations memo, and that was a really broad brush. Here are the major themes that we've heard, and these are the potential strategy directions that we could go. We presented that to the steering committee, they reviewed and revised that document, and then Trevor and I sat down and started writing the draft comprehensive plan. Once we had that draft created, we sent it back to the steering committee, they reviewed and we revised it based on that discussion, and we created another draft of the plan. That plan was presented at the public open house that was held in March 19th, where we had over 60 participants come. Overall, the support, there was a lot of support for the plan, people were able to place dots on recommendations that they liked, and we did receive a number of thoughtful comments. We took those comments back to the steering committee, they reviewed those comments, and then we made revisions to that plan. So the one that you have in front of you tonight, and the one that you'll be considering in the next meeting, is the result of an iterative process that kept going back and refining the document. All right, so unlike other plans, Trevor and I work in areas where a lot of the recommendations are focused on changes to the built environment. This plan, because of the history and the beautiful physical form that you have here in the CBD, is more focused on activating the existing spaces. So the future land use plan largely reflects what is already on the ground or what is in your zoning ordinance. And so the zoning ordinance was recently updated in 2009, and this future land use plan is just reaffirming that vision of a mixed-use CBD. So the plan is also unique in that the structure is slightly different. Most master plans or CBD plans are organized around standard topics of housing or transportation. With this plan, we decided to organize it around six principles, and those principles emerged from the results of the visioning workshop. And so I'm going to step through each one of these six principles and highlight just a couple of the recommendations. Like Trevor said, there are a lot of recommendations in the plan. I'm going to cover ones that will have a dramatic impact, as well as just some fun ones that are interesting and different for this community. So the first one is to diversify Riverside Central Business District, and the principle here is that the CBD should be a lively, active place with a mix of retail, restaurants, and services. The first recommendation is to develop a shop-local campaign. So from our market analysis, Riverside's residents are currently spending most of their restaurant, grocery, and other shopping dollars outside of the village. And so the shop-local campaign is to try to shift a portion of their spending habits back into Riverside, and this could have a dramatic positive impact for local businesses. The second recommendation is to activate vacant storefronts with public art. And so this is a great way to draw positive attention to the empty ground floor retail space that you have, and it's an opportunity to showcase local artists, as well as the history of Riverside, and it could be an educational promotional piece. The third recommendation is to support the farmer's market. So the market right now is a volunteer-coordinated effort, and it's bringing people into the CBD and activating the space. Looking ahead, the farmer's market is growing, and so they might need a larger footprint, and the plan recommends continuing this assistance for the market and looking for ways to strengthen support of the market. All right, the second section is to increase the visibility of Riverside CBD, and the principle here is that the connections to the CBD should be clear and welcoming from the streets, from the bicycle routes, and from the rail corridors. There are a number of recommendations in this section. One of the ones is to expand the gateway signage at key intersections. So there are a lot of people traveling on the corridors surrounding the village, and this is just highlighting the presence of the Riverside CBD to those people who are traveling and luring them in into the district. The recent design competition by the Frederick La Olmsted Society has created a community-approved design already, and those gateway signs could be adapted to other locations. Similar theme, the train station signage. So once a visitor has gotten to Riverside and they've gotten off the train, they may not be aware of the different civic and commercial and natural amenities. So this is just a sign to point out where they should go and how they should investigate the area. And the third recommendation is about business signs. So signs are an integral part of the character of a commercial district, regardless of what they look like. They have a tremendous impact, and positive business signs should call attention to each business, but also contribute to the overall image of the district. The plan recommends trying to achieve a better balance between the preservation of the historic design of the commercial streets, and then promoting those individual businesses, and using those signs as a way to create a historic identity for the downtown. The third section is to enhance street appeal. So the principle here is that the streets and sidewalks of the CBD should be inviting and comfortable places that sustain economic activity. The first recommendation is to complete the street tree canopy. So some sections of the CBD have a lot of street trees and others don't, so we're recommending that you fill in those street tree gaps. Studies have shown that the business districts with plentiful street trees draw shoppers to travel further, stay longer, and actually spend 9% to 12% more for products. A similar recommendation deals with the street furniture. So the street furniture are the benches, the waste receptacles, the water fountains that are on the sidewalks. They also contribute to the identity of the downtown, and when coordinated, they can communicate a brand that is unique to Riverside. The plan recommends creating a set of design guidelines that create a unified look for the street furniture, and then the village can slowly implement and replace things that don't match that vision. Lighting conditions. So Riverside's street lights are also an important part of the village's identity, and at the same time, at the public meetings, we heard residents concerned about low light levels in the CBD and how they feel unsafe at specific spots as pedestrians when they're walking around the Central Business District. The plan recommends investigating ways to improve the situation while also making sure that the lighting meets the historic character of the community. The fourth section is about building connections to the riverfront, and the principle here is that the connection is a key asset and should be strengthened. The first recommendation is about building a recreation and community center. So the former Public Works Building is situated on a prime location, and many residents felt like this was an underutilized site. And redevelopment of the site into a more active use could provide residents with a stronger connection with the river. So this strategy would include reviewing the operational needs of the commission, and then potentially renovating the existing building or constructing a new building in its place. But ideally, whatever structure you're using, it would include a space for community events and take advantage of the river vistas. The second one is more of a fun recommendation, to create a canoe and kayak livery. With the notching of Hoffman Dam and other dams further upstream on the displays, we're opening up miles of waterways for residents to use. And so the plan is recommending investigating how to construct a canoe and kayak launch, and then potentially operating a rental program through the Parks and Recreation Commission. And then encouraging green infrastructure practices. So the Displayne River is not meeting water quality standards, and that's in part due to the quality and the quantity of urban stormwater runoff, and Riverside is familiar with this. The village has already acted on creating a parking lot with permeable pavings, and so the plan encourages further use of these practices within the CBD. And that could include sidewalk landscaping and other permeable surfaces. The fifth section is about preserving and promoting Riverside's legacy. So the principle here is that the CBD can play a unique role in showcasing that legacy of this landmark community. There are a couple of recommendations in the plan that deal with strengthening the Riverside Historical Museum. Now, the commission itself has done a great job in creating this valuable asset, so the plan is recommending ways to further increase the operational capacity, and that could be lengthening the operating hours or increasing the number of exhibits so that you lure people back for repeat visits. We also heard that residents would like the water tower to play a larger role in the experience of Riverside. And so the plan is recommending that, now that you have the engineering study done, to evaluating the market and the long-term operational costs of opening the observation deck. Tours are an excellent way to learn about the history of Riverside, so the plan is recommending continuing to promote the existing walking tours that you have, and then figuring out how to add additional tours to the schedule. And then this third recommendation is to support context-sensitive redevelopment. Now, given the current economy and the existing capacity of the buildings in the CBD, we don't anticipate a new construction in the short term, but over the long term, that's possible. And so this plan simply reemphasizes that new construction to complement the existing historic character in this area. And your zoning ordinance is focused on this. So the final section is about making the CBD easy to visit, and the principle here is that traveling to and within via foot, bike, train, car should be safe and convenient. There are a couple of areas where it makes recommendations on specific sidewalks and crosswalks. The plan also recommends continuing to strengthen the local bicycle facilities, so Riverside has made connections to the regional routes. The village could continue to make connections with other municipal bicycle routes and create a larger bicycle network. And then it's also recommending to promote commuting by train. So Riverside originally developed around the train access, and it was an important part, a strong motivator for the original residents to move to this location. And that advantage remains with the village today. In 2006, our last data source on this, almost half of the people who were using the train station were coming to the train by foot, and those people are walking past the businesses in the Central Business District. And I would bet that they're more likely to make a purchase or stop in a store while they're walking, so the plan recommends strategies for encouraging train commuting among Riverside residents. All right, so the fourth chapter of the plan is focused on implementation, and provides a list of steps that should be undertaken within the next two years to really kick off the implementation of the plan. It also includes a summary of currently available grant programs, and the village has a track record of being able to successfully get grants, so that's an important component, and then, as well as potential village and community organization contributions. So the success of the plan is the combined responsibility of the village staff, the village leadership, the businesses, the community organizations, and the residents. So we did something unique in that we reviewed all of the strategies in the plan and then identified where those potential actors could play a key role in the plan's implementation. Another important point is that as part of the local technical assistance grant, CMAP is committing to helping you implement the plan once it's adopted. So over the next two years, Trevor and I are still going to be around. We can help you connect to people in the region who are doing innovative, successful things. We can send you information about grant opportunities, and provide you with letters of support to further your applications, and similar things like that. So, oh, I forgot this side. All of the plan's recommendations, Trevor and I were struggling with this a little bit. We tried to put the physical form, the recommendations that had a physical element, all on one map. So this is the framework plan, and it highlights those. It doesn't highlight everything, so the shop-local campaign is not here, but you can see some of the recommendations. So let's flip to the last slide. So Trevor and I were recently reflecting on what a pleasure it's been working here with the village staff and the steering committee and residents, and it's an honor to be able to add Riverside to our resumes. From an outside perspective, the participation at the public meetings and the level of dedication and work within the steering committee, it's clear that the residents deeply care about this place, and it's our tremendous asset, and I think it'll go a long way to implementing the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Nora. Trevor, thank you. At this point, we have had the plan out in the public sector for quite a long time. The last public meeting was on March 19th. The draft plan has been promoted to our residents through a number of e-flashes and other advertisements around the community, so I hope people have looked at the 90 pages, not just the summary that Nora presented. So with that, I will now open up the section of this public meeting to discuss and receive any public comments, any problems, issues, concerns people may have. So maybe first the village board, if anybody has anything in particular they would like to raise?
Yeah, and actually, I'd like to have the folks, if they're here tonight, who wrote about Miller Road, because I wanted to talk about that, but I'd be happy to let the folks who wrote us a letter speak up if they're here. So I guess I'll talk. There is one recommendation regarding Miller Road, which is on the southeast side of the village, Borders Ogden. I know we've talked about it a little bit, Peter, I know you and I have talked about it a little bit. Making that a two-way street, an entrance into the village as well as an exit poses some challenges. We have one letter here from residents on Lionel. I know that that was something that we were going to look at only through an extensive study, a traffic study, as well as I believe the state has to get involved since it borders Ogden, it's a state road. I, you know, my sense is, it's, opening that up as a two-way street is not going to greatly increase the influx of traffic to Central Business District. It's almost three-quarters of a mile away from the CBD. It's not easy to get to the CBD from Miller Road. It's not as though we're opening up a street that feeds directly into our Central Business District, and I think it would be disruptive to the neighborhood in that area. We've already opened Lionel Road for a certain period of time last year, and it would be very similar to that in terms of the disruptions, the cut-throughs, et cetera, and I don't think it would be something, I think it would be a net negative for the village rather than a net positive.
Let me just make an overarching comment about all the particulars in this plan. There's a lot of stuff in here that's not meant to be adopted, it is not meant to be implemented as one piece of paper. This is meant, once and if it is adopted by the board, for future village boards and residents to come forward and say, let's pursue this, let's pursue that. So what this is, is more, at least, my understanding, is this is a menu of items that the board endorses in theory for further investigation. Nothing can be done here with a single finger. So just as an overarching comment, the comment about Miller Road, or the shop local, or the museum, or anything like that, there are items that CMAP and the residents have expressed points of view on, and that's why they got into this plan. So, now, back to Miller Road.
I just want to make one comment about this plan.
Wait, you want to interrupt? Do you want to finish on Miller Road while I...
I agree with Mark about Miller Road.
Do you want to give us a little bit of background? Because Miller Road was brought up by more than one resident at the March 19th meeting. The plan was changed from the language on March 19th to what's before us right now. Again, I'm not advocating for anything in particular here, I'm just trying to make sure the residents and all of us are aware of why it says what it says now.
So since I didn't include it in the overall presentation, I'll just do a summary. The strategy 6.5 is recommending restoring Miller Road as a two-way street to make it easier to enter the village from Ogden Avenue. And that is part of a multi-step strategy to try to counter the CBD's low traffic volumes, which can make it difficult to attract and support businesses. So the last draft, it was presented that the title of the recommendation was... So the last draft, it was presented that the title of the recommendation was Restore Miller Road as a Two Way Street. And at the public open house, we had some support for that. There were people who were placing stickers that that should happen, but we also received a number of comments that called, raised some issues with that. So we took that to the steering committee, and we presented an alternative way to structure that strategy. We changed the name to Study Restoring Miller Road as a Two Way Street, so that really emphasizes that it would need to be studied, and it would need to be coordinated with the Illinois Department of Transportation. And in the language, we added a sentence about the potential traffic impacts of this change should be studied, and the final decision should reflect the concerns of nearby residents. So it's a, the strategy is to study restoring it instead of restoring it outright. Does that answer?
What I liked about the discussion of Miller Road, and I don't know, I would probably agree with Mark and Jim that I don't necessarily think that's a good ingress into the village. But what I liked about the thought process is how do we get residents into the downtown faster, or easier, or safer? And which, you know, made me drive up and down Ogden Avenue and find out the way I drive, and I would much rather personally come in Riverside at PJ Klemm's, which is very Joliet Road, at that stoplight. That's where I would much rather come in, even though I live down by Miller Road, I like coming in that way and coming through town. But it's impossible to make that left-hand turn at any time of the day, it's just impossible. So, you know, what I would like to see is the low-hanging fruit here would be trying to get a left-hand turn signal at that light, would increase the traffic into our CBD more directly, as well as, I think, take care of a really unsafe intersection.
I'm sorry, Joe, you're talking about when you're coming east down Ogden, right?
When I'm going east down Ogden, yeah. Because you can't see behind you because of the turn of Ogden Avenue, so people are stuck in the left lane, they try to get over to the right lane, and it's a mess. So that's one place that, but your Miller Road analogy is what actually got me to think of. Now, so I think the fact that you brought it up is a good thing. I don't know if I agree with it, but I think it's a good thing, but it made me think of other things.
We have the option of adding, taking things out of this plan. You can leave it in the plan along the lines of what Joe said, to keep the consciousness there. Again, nothing can, nothing will move forward unless a disvillage board decides to further investigate any of these alternatives in here. So, Jim?
Well, I just wanted to say that when we were first presented with this idea, I was a bit skeptical that you would bring something new to the table. Because we've been through workshops like this many times before, but I must compliment both of you for an amazing plan. I think you've really done your homework, and I think it's sympathetic. And I think it gives us a way forward, and certainly a framework on which to build, and I must compliment both of you, I was truly impressed with it.
Yeah, I want to compliment the process also. I think that this plan is scaled in a way that it meets the residents' expectations without reinventing the wheel. In other words, it's realistic. But I do want to point out, of course, I know you referenced other materials on this, and you picked up an error, that Daniel Burnham having worked in Riverside on page 49, and he did not. So that's something you picked up, Daniel Burnham did not work in Riverside.
You heard, he worked on Miller Road.
I also want to, I know that the concerns, I know I emailed the board about this, and Peter, about this business of increasing lighting has to be done in a very judicious manner. You don't want harshness of any kind, whether it's in the landscaping or in lighting, in Riverside. So it must be, I like that you mentioned that it needs to be scaled to meet the historic level of the lighting, and that's correct, which is what we did with the water tower, right? So another thing I would caution is this business of increasing signage. There's such a thing as sign pollution. And I know where I live, within 100 feet of my home, there's about 30-something signs, and no one can possibly be expected to read them all. So too much signage is a bad thing, but the type of signage that you presented pictures of in this plan, I think is appropriate. And the other thing I would caution is this idea of speeding up the review process for businesses. This was a subject of much discussion when the CBD was rezoned a few years ago. And this process was put in place specifically to involve a lot of the commissions, so that there would not be just one small commission group involved in this, like the plan commission. So I don't know that I would support such a thing, but again, you know, I don't mean to nitpick the plan. Overall, it's a very good effort, the best I've seen to date, and we don't want to throw out the baby with the bathwater, so I do support this plan and commend the effort.
Anybody care, anybody in the audience care to comment this time?
Richard Ray, 262 Lionel Road. I didn't plan to do this, but I'm going to do it. A long, long time ago, in a land that seemed far, far away, Navy Pier, where the University of Illinois was, and where I attended as an architectural student, I had to take a course in city planning. Most usefulst course I ever took, with the exception of one thing that stuck in my head. And it's a simple phrase, and I've tried to find a textbook, because I have an awful lot of my textbooks left, but I couldn't find it. But it goes something like, paraphrasing something like this, "A business will be created, will thrive, or will diminish and disappear in accordance with the public's need for it." And guess what? Riverside is a prime example of just exactly that. I've lived in this town more than 40 years. I could name every business in this town when I moved in, because I was an architect and I was that bearing in mind city planning. And guess what has survived and thrived over those years? Guess what businesses have thrived and survived over those years? All the businesses that had to do with automobile repair. Do you believe that? Now, I don't know where there's a lot of tax revenue that comes from those places. Faulkner's is now Metalmites, but it's still there. And the other two businesses are still there, and judging by the cars I see parked out there every day, are thriving. The longest business I know of in the Central Business District is, guess what? Pre-Hop Cleaners. They were there 42 years ago, and they're still there. Okay? When I first moved in the town, the jewel store was vacant, and about the second year I was in this town, the food store moved in, the independent certified moved in, and they appear to be thriving. And I've heard at the, believe it or not, at the LA Fitness Club, people say that they go into Riverside to shop at the food store. Would you believe that? We have a lot of traffic coming in to shop at Riverside Foods. It's a thriving business. So just bear that in mind when you talk about, when you think about getting rid of those businesses that cater to automobile. I think that in the zoning ordinance now, those are non-conforming uses, I believe, in the B2 district.
I think that was taken out. I may be wrong.
I don't think so. They're a non-conforming use, and their use is allowed to continue so long as it remains that kind of a business. I thought that was a major flaw, very frankly, in that plan, but nonetheless.
I think that may have been taken out also, but I don't recall. But your points will take it.
All right. So I just thought I would like to bring those forward. We had a kiosk at the intersection of Riverside Road and the railroad tracks that was wiped out by an automobile accident, but we actually had a kiosk there for a while. It's been replaced by the metal building now, the switching, or the Burlington's facility there. But it was a concrete building, and we turned it into a kiosk, and it had a map of the downtown district on it, and it had the name of all the establishments on it. It was wiped out by an automobile accident and replaced. I was privileged to be on the original committee for Central Business District, who developed the plan that you see basically, the sidewalk scape and the lighting. And over the years, the sidewalk plan has been butchered, basically, by seceding boards, and a lot of the trees been removed and the concrete it over, so that we had room for bicycle parking and for sidewalk cafes, et cetera. So there are still a few of those big trees left in town that was part of that original. And just so you know this, the original plan you will find at the bank, with the raised curbs around the planting beds and the angle parking. That was paid for by the bank itself. The village was fortunate to get a big grant, and the Central Business District was done at no cost to the village. All the streetscape was done, the lighting was done at no cost. However, we had to meet IDOT guidelines, so they did not allow us to have that kind of parking. We had to go to the regular parking. However, it did make it possible for us to buy the parking lots that you see on both sides of Burlington. And then soon after that, the Burlington provided us with the funds to develop the parking along the railroad right-of-way. Just some old trivia from an old guy who remembers and was part of all that stuff, but I just want you to bear in mind that I've seen businesses come and go. Even the pizza place, I heard people at those meetings saying, "What this town needs is a good pizza place." Well, a good pizza place is leaving town at the end of the week, isn't it? Because why? Because there isn't enough traffic. So what you need to do, if you really want to be successful in the Central Business District of Riverside, is create a traffic pattern that gets people from outside this village into this village, into the Central Business District. And that's what you should concentrate on. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. I guess I'll go next, since I've been here 34 years. You've been here 39, you got me, I may have everybody else on the board 34 years.
I was here before it was a national store.
And I was not. However, I can also name some of those stores that are gone. However, we live in today's world, not yesterday's world. And if this plan recommended that the village pursue clothing stores, shoe stores, pharmacies, and the like, it would bring folly to this plan. What this plan recommends, to what you are saying, is get what the people will support. The residents clearly, in all of this public input, said, "We want to spend our money here. We have very favorable demographics here. It is our job to make sure those demographics get publicized through the area, so retailers and stores understand the spending power that's here." And our residents want to spend that money here. They have said they want to support dining options, specialty stores. I mean, you talk about specialty stores. Look at, and I don't want to be leaving anybody out here, but Higgins Glass and Aunt Diana's, they not only have national reputations, they have international reputations. That's what we need to attract. Easier said than done, obviously, but, you know, this plan talks about that type of stuff. The business district, in my opinion, and I've said this as long as I've sat up here, isn't here to generate sales tax dollars. I'll take them, and we need them. But the business district is here to support the quality of life in this community. And, you know, I think that's where you want to go, and you, we all agree with this stuff. So anybody else want to chime in on that? Anybody else care to speak?
Good evening, everyone. Jack Wyatt, F-165 Bartram Road. Had the pleasure for many years of sitting at that table, and was involved, certainly the last time, the, I guess, Central Business District Plan, whatever we want to call it, I guess it was called the CBD Plan, or what is it?
Transit-oriented Development.
Transit-oriented Development Plan, whatever you might call it. I'm here tonight to be supportive of the plan that has been proposed, because I believe that the village should have a plan. As you determined over the period of review over the last several months, there have been a number of plans over the last 40 years or so. And those plans, you know, have served as a guide. We don't always implement everything in them, we try different things. The last plan, of course, the, one of the major issues was a discussion of financing, and that, you know, was not a successful discussion and caused a lot of changes. But I don't think that's a bad thing, because I think that's what this community needs to do, just like, I think that's the reason that this board went out again and asked CMAP to come in and use their talents to try to help us address what is, admittedly, a very difficult, ongoing process. Everything that everybody says about our Central Business District when they come up here is true. We need to respond to what the people want here. If we're not, if we don't, these people aren't going to succeed. It is difficult to find your way in here, but the town is designed that way. The concept of whether Miller Road ought to be one-way or two-way, it responded to what the community wanted some years back when it was changed. I would agree with what has been said here. I'm not necessarily in favor of turning Miller into a two-way street again, but what I would suggest is that perhaps that idea be restated to examine access to the village from the south, in other words, anywhere along Ogden. And it obviously addresses the need to look at the design of the major intersection coming in at Joliet Road. Just as a few years ago, we had many, many comments about the changes that were needed over by the high school at Forest and First Avenue. And how many years did it take to finally get a turn signal over there? It just, you just had to keep pounding away at the state. It wasn't that it wasn't asked for by previous boards, but they kept turning us down, turning us down, turning us down, and all you got to do, you just got to keep at it until you get it done. So I would like to commend the village for pursuing this, for updating this plan, and I hope that it will continue to be used to ensure the long-term viability and strength of Riverside. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wyatt. Jack rephrased, Jack put a spin on the Miller Road thing to put it more of a geographical bet, entering, you know, from that side of the village. Just for a little more background, the intersection on Joliet Road, which is buried point over the bridge, we have, and again, this is to the point if you have to keep asking, within the last 18 months, with the village lines, we approached the last 18 months with the Village Alliance, we approached IDOT to do exactly that, to put a turn signal, a left-hand turn signal in there. Again, we were rejected after that came out. They did traffic studies and they said, "No, it doesn't warrant it." Well, I sure think it does. Okay? A lot of us here do. And maybe when we ask the third and the fourth time and you keep bringing political pressure to these things, it takes time. But we have pursued that exact solution and we have been told, no. And we did that collaboratively with the Village Alliance because that impacts them also. So Mark, I'll come back to you. You brought up the Miller Road thing. You heard the kind of discussion here. Do you want to, you want to change what's here? Do you think you'd like to change what's here or leave it as it is, given the sense that, again, this isn't a direction to do something? This is a...
Oh, no. I agree with the comment that the, you know, looking at access to the village from the south merits some looks. Again, I, you know, I go back to the experiment we tried last year over on Lionel with access and how that, I think, didn't turn out as well as we expected and I'm glad we tried it, but I think we kind of knew where that was headed. So I'm still against adopting it with the Miller Road. Decent, frankly.
Anybody want to comment on Mark's position? If not, then I would ask the opinions of the other board members. Mark would like to see, this is section 6.5. It says, "Study restoring Miller Road as a two-way street." It had said, "Make it a two-way street." This says, "Study it." So Jim, would you like to see it removed?
Yeah, my take is, I'm sorry. My take is, we have so many other things that, in this plan, that merit study, discussion, resources, that the Miller Road thing, I just don't think...
Just because it's not here doesn't mean it can't be, it's been discussed, it's out there, everybody knows about it. It can always be brought back to back. So Lonnie?
You know, I don't feel strongly about it, but I hesitate to condone things that discourage entry points into the village. And I would not necessarily want to see that removed. I think it should be investigated further and perhaps considered.
So you'd like to see this remain as...
I like to see it remain, I think.
Trustee Mallory?
I would think that we do kind of what Jack and I spoke to earlier, is maybe not so much mention Miller Road by name, but say that we explore entrances to the village on Ogden Avenue as we head east. So that way, that brings it...
There's really only, I mean, really only talking about three entrances, right? We're talking about Lionel, we're talking about Miller, and we're talking about Joliet. We tried Lionel, right? We are working on Joliet. So I kind of, it narrows it down. And I'm not, I'm just trying to walk through it. So it really narrows it down to one.
I understand it, but again, it's something that we should be exploring. And to shut a door on any of it, we shouldn't shut a door on any of it. We can move, I agree with Lonnie. We could move in all different types of directions, but we shouldn't shut doors on things.
I agree with Trustee Sachi. I would like to see this avenue left there. I do agree with what Trustee Mallory said. Maybe I could ask, turn to Trevor or Nora and get your point of view on what you're hearing here about possibly broadening this Miller Road issue here to not just be Miller Road, but to talk about, investigate ways to increase in and out flow to the village from the south.
I think that makes a lot of sense, what Joe said about, we changed the language to emphasize the study and the strategy based on the public open house, but to broaden it and really do a comprehensive study of accessing from the south makes a lot of sense.
What do you, if we go in that direction, is it...
No, we got, I just explained, we...
Good. You lose, because we got three to two. So the proposal, I would propose we broaden this language to talk about access in and out of those from the south and not just Miller Road. I trust, Trustee Sachi, Trustee Mallory agree. So if you would change that in the final, of course, this is not, we're not adopting this plan yet. It comes before the board at the next meeting. So that's...
We have it on the agenda for tonight.
Yes, yes, that's next meeting. Remember the beginning? We have two meetings. Everybody's treated to too many tonight. Public meeting and then our regular board.
That one I'll concede to you.
Okay. Is there any further comment or discussion? Otherwise, thank you to CMAP and Nora and Trevor. Thank you to all of our residents, business owners, community organizations, community leaders, media organizations, and everybody for helping us see through this last 12-month process. I must say that most of us, maybe I know I shared Trustee Reynolds' point of view early on, which has been there, done that, where are we at here? But I had a lot of faith in the professionalism of your organization and your approach to this was not one of planning for the sake of planning because it's in a textbook and, you know, let's make a plan, just make a plan. Your approach, and this is dictated by your employer, CMAP, is to, all of our communities, we're only as strong, the whole region's only as strong as the weakest link in this whole network. So we have to reach out and help communities improve their quality of life. And that is different in every community. And boy, you sure certainly tailored this to this really unique community. So for that, thank you. So if there is nothing further, I will ask for a motion in a second to adjourn this public hearing on the CBD plan.
So move.
Motion by Trustee Reynolds and a second by Trustee Mallory. And if you would please call the roll.
Trustee Reynolds?
Aye.
Trustee Shubbs?
Aye.
Trustee Sachi?
Aye.
Trustee Mallory?
Thank you. And the meeting is adjourned at 8:35 a.m. Don't go anywhere. We're going to reconvene. Right now, we're going to convene the next meeting. This is our regular Board of Trustees meeting. And it still happens to be Monday, April 15th, 2013. It is now 8:35. And I will welcome all of you that are here with us, to those who are watching at home and to those who pick up the DVD at the library later on in the week or the months and those who tune into the village website to listen to the meeting. So you're getting two for one tonight. Visitors and residents are welcome to all meetings of the village board. Comments and suggestions on any topic are welcome at any regular meeting. Comments may be made during the time identified for public comment on the agenda, or if the comments pertain to an agenda item at the time that item comes up for discussion. Individuals who wish to comment must be recognized by the president and then speak at the podium and should begin by identifying themselves by name and address so that the village clerk can add this information to the meeting minutes. Please note that while the village code requires two readings of an ordinance, it also provides that the board can waive a second reading and take final action on an ordinance at any time by a vote of the concurrence of a majority of all members then holding office. So with that said, let's proceed. And I will ask our village clerk to again call the roll now for this regular meeting.
President Gorman?
Here.
Trustee Reynolds?
Here.
Trustee Shubbs?
Still here.
Trustee Sachi?
Here.
Trustee Mallory?
Here.
Village manager Scolera?
Here.
Village attorney Lance Molina?
Still here.
Village attorney Michael Marr?
Here.
Also present, village clerk Kathy Haley, not present this evening, trustee Sussman and trustee Sow.
Thank you, Kathy. So we have a form, so we shall proceed. So we shall remove, we shall move right into our agenda as we said the pledge at our first meeting. And the first item up on the agenda this evening is the presentation of petitions, et cetera. And we will ask Chief Weitzel, who is here, thank you, chief, if you would please step up to discuss the 2012 Riverside Police Department annual report.
Thank you, President Gorman, Board of Trustees and manager Scolera. Hopefully in your packet is the 2012 annual report for the police department. Just wanted to review it quickly with you. It will be available tomorrow on our website and distributed at the public library and will probably be E flash. It is currently available to police department lobby. It took some while to compile this report because, as most of the police reports, a lot of it is statistical-driven and it takes a great deal of time for me to get these numbers from our court system, state police and other organizations. So I was actually kind of pleased that we got it in April. That's kind of early for us. But I'd just like to go over some of the highlights and then answer any questions the board may have on the annual report. As I stated earlier to the board when we did the crime report, the overall crime was down 8.4% in the village in 2012. The only category that went up in the seven crimes that are mandated to be reported were thefts and it was a minor spike. The department handled over 13,000 calls for police service in 2012. We issued over 5,700 tickets that included parking tickets and moving violations. We held 428 prisoners in custody for 2012 for a variety of reasons and charges. A lot of them are mandated by state law that had to be held. We had 141 juvenile contacts in 2012. That's significant because 71 of those 141 were new contact offenders. The juvenile offender crime statistics have gone up the last three years significantly as we are starting to see more contacts with juveniles 18 and under is what the Illinois state statute is. In 2012, we also started to cross-train all our employees in many different areas. For example, juvenile officers, 14 of my 16 officers are our certified juvenile officers. We're trying to get them through Breathelyzer School, some other schools that will allow them not only to serve the public better, but it's also a cost reduction because when we don't have those officers on duty, we have to call them in to handle those cases. So I'm hoping by the end of this year or into 2014, a majority of the officers will be trained on a lot of the major specialties that they would have to be called in off duty for, with the exception of that being a detective. We had 100% compliance in 2012 with our tobacco grant. The department received an additional $24,000 from the state for traffic grant enforcement, which we used all of those dollars. On that program, specifically just the grant program for traffic enforcement, the officers issued 396 tickets just on the grant enforcement itself. We had 124 DUI arrests in 2012. That was up from 2011. The village experienced 279 auto accidents, which is within the corporate limits. And the 911 center had 15,352 calls, telephone calls to the 911 center. 3,000, over 3,000 of those were 911 calls and about 12,000 were administrative calls. Some significant cases in 2012, we made three significant burglary arrests, one on South Forbes, one on Selworn and one on Bartram. Each of those cleared multiple residential burglary cases the department was investigating. And in one case, it cleared several other burglaries in neighboring suburbs. Significant, when I was going through those 428 arrests that were made by the, physical arrests by the village, so this, maybe this does say that there's a lot of cut-through traffic because 89% of the people we arrested in 2012 listed their addresses outside the Village of Riverside and 42% listed it as city of Chicago as their last known, as their current address where they were living when arrested. I'd like to say that the report itself was prepared by my administrative assistant Pamela McCall with the help of the officers that submitted the data to her. So the document in front of you is really her project. She did an outstanding job, put it together herself. And this year, we used to go get it printed at Kinko's, but the village now has a machine that will be able to do that. So my secretary was able to save us some dollars by doing this whole project in-house. So that's a snapshot. It will be available for the public tomorrow. If it isn't out there, it's already in our lobby. But if any trustee or anyone has a question they'd like me to answer on the annual report, I'd be happy to.
Chief, what can you point to that is the reason for this increase in juvenile crime?
I think one of them is that several years ago, the state of Illinois raised, it used to be 17 and under for the classifications, now 18. Unless, well, there's certain offenses you got to automatically charge as an adult, but you're just seeing younger and younger male offenders commit the, you know, serious felony crimes. I mean, we're talking kids that are 13, 14 and 15, so they're not even approaching the 18 threshold. There is some gang activity, mostly from outsides coming in. And there has been more pickup of crime for property crime, specifically residential burglaries or thefts, depending on the situation. But, you know, majority of those juveniles, of those 141, a lot of those were criminal arrests. They weren't just petty offenses or truancy violations, those type. They were either misdemeanors or felonies. So I would venture to say, if you talk to our neighboring suburbs and their chiefs or their detectives, they would probably tell you that juvenile crime is one of the fastest-growing statistics in their community. I don't believe Riverside is alone there.
Chief, two things. You mentioned that a large majority of traffic citations go to residents outside Riverside.
That is correct.
Maybe the board could consider revising our ordinance to provide that when your officer stops those people, if they're able to show a bag that they shopped in Riverside, you know, maybe that could give them some credits of some sort. I don't want to step on anybody's toes here, but just something for the board to consider, chief. Second is, I want to compliment you and your staff on your collaborative efforts, which have always been there, but I feel they've really been increased in the past few years with our two school districts and with Brookfield Zoo. Those are three very, very important entities to the Village of Riverside, to all of our residents, to our property values. And you guys work very collaboratively, in the opinion of the board, with those organizations. Can you comment a little bit on how you manage all that, given your time, issues with your staff and budgets and so forth?
Well, I'll start with the zoo. I personally have a long history with the police chief, George Hall. I used to work for the Brookfield Zoo Police Department in like 1982. At then they used to have a seasonal program. George Hall was not the police chief then. There was another individual named Harold Fitzsimmons. They brought him in from Oak Park to take over the zoo, but it didn't work out. He left the zoo shortly and went to be the police chief in Lisle and was there for a long time. And they promoted from within. So the current police chief at the zoo has been there 40 years, I would say, you know, in a capacity, some capacity. And they really have started under the new director, if that's his title or the CEO, Stuart Stroll. I mean, he's reached out to our department personally, the director of the zoo, encouraging us to be collaborative with his police agency on training, sharing issues. A current issue that we're working on with the zoo right now is video cameras. They'd like their video cameras to feed into our 911 center. And I told them that would be great if they could pick up the bill. So they're going to look at that. So, I mean, I have, and they're willing to, you know, they're willing to work with us. And a lot of people don't realize, I mean, the zoo police officers are highly-trained police officers. It's kind of, you know, people, they look at them as a security department, but they are fully-commissioned law enforcement agencies. The only thing they don't have is a lockup facility. So depending on where the arrests take place, they either have to use the Village of Brookfield's Police Department or the Village of Riverside. So, you know, we welcome their cooperation and we continue to work with them. District 208, I have a very good working relationship with the superintendent. I started that when Dave Bonnet was there. I know Dave from when he was at District 96. He came in temporarily, if you could call it that. I think he ended up being there three years, I think, when he was supposed to be there temporarily. But, and the new superintendent, I have, we've discussed many issues, from parking issues to security issues, which is really what we really work on with his staff. We go a long way with his staff members, Pam Blaisma and John Passarella. And the superintendent seems to have some new, fresh ideas. I have repeated my request to Superintendent Skengus that the school board fund a school resource officer. He took it seriously, but he wanted to wait till after his own election took place for his board. And he said that he would get back to me on looking at that issue where we could, we would, they would fund it maybe nine months out of the year and the police department would fund it three months because they were not in session over the summer. So we would have to pick up that officers. But if that took place, you'd be talking about District 208 could possibly be funding 80% of that salary. Now, he hasn't committed to that, but what he has committed to is to give it a serious look again in the near future. And District 96, we've worked closely with District 96 and, you know, they're going to be having new leadership come in. And the manager has informed me, he's already asked the current superintendent to set up a meeting with us for the incoming superintendent so we can meet with her and hopefully work very closely.
Thank you, chief. Any other comments or questions for Chief Weitzel? If not, thank you for the report, chief.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll open up the meeting to any public comment. Anybody care to address the board at this time? Gent, please.
Good evening and thank you. Gent, 265 Northwood Road. I'm here on behalf of the Frederick Law Omsa Society of Riverside. I'm here on behalf of the Frederick Law Olmstead Society of Riverside to give you a brief update on current events and upcoming activities. Tomorrow, the village will be hosting some members from the American Planning Association. I think you'll be talking about that later in your, in your agenda this evening, but just wanted to mention that the society's been tapped for helping to assist in touring the members through Riverside tomorrow. Jim Petrozelka, a board member, as well as Lonnie Satchi, will be engaging them in that tour, and they've come up with a specialized tour for them. It's not our typical architectural tour, but they'll be gauging it toward more, toward the planning aspects of Riverside for this membership. So we thank Jim and Lonnie for doing that. On Wednesday this week, the seventeenth, at seven p.m., at the library, we are cosponsoring our next lecture, Environmental Conservation After Dark is the title. It's been given by Drew Carhart. He's with the Illinois Coalition for Responsible Outdoor Lighting, and he'll be talking about some ways, some of the many ways that man-made lighting affects our environment. And what we've been encouraging our lecturers to do is to, when they come here, to also, if they can, speak to one of the local schools. And so the speaker has agreed to speak to the fifth grade class at Central. Oftentimes, we feel these lectures are usually preaching to the choir, to the adults that participate in those evening sessions, but we find that the students are really receptive to some of these ideas, and it gives them an opportunity to learn something new. The society's next workday, Landscape Workday, will be on the twenty-seventh of this month in Patriots Park from nine till twelve. It'll be a special Arbor Day celebration, in which will, there'll be a tree planting that will take place. And looking a little further ahead, the next Landscape Workday is an annual event, which is the Great Garlic Mustard Pull, which will be on the May eleventh at the Scout Cabin, again, from nine to twelve. This is done in partnership with the Northeastern Illinois Invasive Plant Partnership. This is an activity to try and encourage people to identify and manage the invasive species known as the garlic mustard. There is actually a video on our website that helps you also identify this plant and how to, how to control it. And lastly, I wanted to mention that April is our annual, the annual month in which we sponsor a poetry contest entitled Reflections on Riverside. The deadline to submit entries is April thirtieth. It's now in its sixth year, and it's been opened up to the high school level. It's been grade school level in the past, now we opened it up to the high school students as well. And again, more information available on our website, which is olmsteadsociety.org. I think that's it for this evening.
You forgot to mention that we will soon be giving a tour for the entire eighth-grade class, what we do every year, where we brainwashed them into becoming young preservationists.
Thank you for reminding me of that.
Thank you, Gint.
Thank you.
And for all of you there, the garlic mustard plant can neither be made into garlic nor mustard. So, you know, go figure, right?
But, you know, I think we found that you can make a pesto out of it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else at this time? Seeing no one else, we shall move on to reports of the village officers. First up, I want to give a brief update on the American Planning Association tour, which will take place in Riverside tomorrow on April sixteenth, and Gint mentioned that. The American Planning Association is the professional organization for planning professionals in the United States. They hold an annual conference in a different city throughout the United States each year. This year, their conference is in Chicago at the Hyatt Downtown. It's a week-long event. During their conferences, they conduct tours or visits or seminars at different sites within the locale, whether it's Atlanta, Los Angeles, what have you. In Chicago, they've picked a number of sites for their planning professionals to visit, sites that have interest, of course, to planners. And we were honored to have them select the Village of Riverside for one of their tours. And they will be coming out here tomorrow with about forty planners from around the United States to study here in the village. They will come out, have a lecture in the morning. And this, again, is coordinated through the Riverside Historical Society and the Frederick Law Olmstead Society. They will have a lecture. They will then be broken into three groups and go on walking tours throughout the village, so please watch for them tomorrow. They will have a continental breakfast and a box lunch. It's provided to them as part of their fee for this program, and that was all coordinated through the efforts of Riverside Foods. I want to thank them for stepping up and, and doing a lot of work to assist the village, and of course, Peter and his staff have done a lot also. So thank you to those volunteer organizations in the village for stepping up. Without them, this does not happen. I also want to thank CMAP. Nora Beck, who you heard from earlier, is the one who brought this opportunity to our attention, but for her, we may not have had this opportunity. And Nora and CMAP have graciously lent her time to helping us arrange the logistics for this. It's always helpful to have somebody that's being paid to do some of the work because it kind of keeps it going. So it was quite an endeavor, looking forward to it tomorrow, so thank you all. Next up on my report is a proclamation, which I will read for the village concerning our Arbor Day celebration here. So this presidential proclamation reads as follows, "Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas the holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce erosion of our topsoil by wind and water, purify our air and water by reducing pollution, and create plant and wildlife diversity. And trees have been shown to increase property values, reduce heating and cooling costs, and conserve energy use. And whereas trees can beautify our parks and streets, improve the quality of our urban environment, and carry on the tradition planned by the vision of Frederick Olmstead. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Michael C. Gorman, village president, proclaim the day of April twenty-six, twenty thirteen, as Arbor Day in the Village of Riverside. And I urge all citizens to plant and care for trees, to gladden the heart, and promote the protection and care of trees within our community and woodlands." And we will hear a little bit more about Arbor Day in one of our upcoming agenda items. Moving on to the last item under my report, and that gets us back to the Central Business District Plan. And this was the subject of the public meeting, which started at seven-thirty this evening, which we received a presentation from CMAP, the architects of this plan, and the process that they followed and so forth. We heard some public comment, we heard a comment from the board members. And at this time now, this plan is before the board for any further discussion and adoption. So what we will have before us is a resolution adopting the Central Business District Plan as presented by the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning through their local technical assistance program. So I will go through a brief summary of the process. So those of you who were with us for our public meeting, you may have heard some of this, but for those who are tuning in for this meeting, I want to make sure you understand what it is we're considering. As part of the larger Chicago metropolitan economic region, the Village of Riverside both influences and is influenced by the region. CMAP, the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, is the official regional planning organization for the northeastern Illinois counties of Cook, DuPage, Kane, Kendall, McHenry, and Will. CMAP developed and now guides the implementation of GoTo2040, Metropolitan Chicago's first comprehensive regional plan in more than one hundred years. To address anticipated population growth of more than two million new residents, GoTo2040 establishes coordinated strategies that will help the region's two-hundred-and-eighty-four communities address transportation, housing, economic development, open space, the environment, and other quality of life issues. In October twenty-ten, CMAP, based on a Sustainable Communities Regional Planning Grant from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, launched the Local Technical Assistance Program. The goal of this program is to provide communities across the Chicago metropolitan region with assistance in planning projects that advance the principles of GoTo2040. In December twenty-ten, the Village of Riverside submitted an application to participate in the Local Technical Assistance Program. The objective of the Riverside program was to develop a Central Business District Plan that would formulate a vision and identify development strategies for improving the function and character of the village's downtown while building on the village's image and identity. Enhancing the quality of life enjoyed by Riverside residents is a central priority of this plan. In March twenty-eleven, the village was notified that Riverside was one of the approximately sixty applicants chosen to participate in the Local Technical Assistance Program. They received over two-hundred-and-twenty project proposals from throughout the region. One hundred percent of the cost for the work on this project is funded through CMAP's Local Technical Assistance Program, and for that, we thank CMAP for this assistance. In early twenty-twelve, the Village of Riverside established a steering committee composed of representatives from the Plant Commission, Economic Development Commission, Landscape Advisory Commission, Preservation Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission, as well as two members from the Riverside Chamber of Commerce. These members help provide guidance on the planning process and the plan recommendations. As part of the process, the Village of Riverside and CMAP held public meetings regarding the Central Business District Plan on April fifteenth, twenty-twelve, September twenty-fifth, twenty-twelve, and March nineteenth of twenty-thirteen. The meetings, along with an interactive kiosk at the Riverside Library and the website, which was put up by CMAP, provided our residents with an opportunity to provide input into the plan. And for those of you who listened in on the public meeting, you heard the outstanding participation of our residents, based on CMAP's working with many other communities and their level of participation they receive from communities many times larger than us, but receive much less participation. So I told them not to be surprised before they started in that. The Village of Riverside Central Business District Plan describes the desired vision for the future of the Central Business District and serves to guide land use and investment decisions over time to ensure that the vision for the Central Business District is achieved. So at this time, I would ask for a motion and a second approving the attached resolution adopting the Central Business District Plan for the Village of Riverside, Illinois, as presented by the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning as part of the Local Technical Assistance Program, with the change that was proposed during our public meeting to broaden the scope of recommendation six-point-five in the plan, changing the focus of that section from solely an investigation, the possibility of investigation of changing access on Miller Road, to a focus on investigating access into the village from the south border, from the entire south border of the village.
So move.
Second. So a motion by trustee Reynolds and a second by trustee Shavitz is their discussion at this time among the board or from anybody in the audience. And again, for those who are just tuning in now, we did have a, I thought, a very good discussion during the public meeting, so we already have had a good discussion, so hearing nothing further at this time, I would ask our village clerk to please call a roll.
Trustee Reynolds.
Aye.
Trustee Shavitz.
Aye.
Trustee Dadd.
Aye.
Trustee Valerie.
Aye.
Thank you, and the Central Business District Plan for the Village of Riverside is adopted. If you would please indulge me at this point, and a very, very lengthy process. It took a lot of time by a lot of people in this town, and I appreciate that. It also took a lot of our staff time. So it's hundred percent grant-funded, but it's, everything takes time, and from the elected officials too. So I will be including a letter in this plan, introducing the plan to our community, and that letter will read as follows. Dear Riverside residents, with a great sense of civic pride, I am pleased to introduce the Village of Riverside Central Business District Plan. The vision that ultimately guided the development of the plan came from a community-based, public participation process, including Riverside residents, community leaders, civic organizations, business owners, and other key stakeholders. I applaud the adoption of this plan on April fifteenth, twenty thirteen, by the Riverside Village Board. The plan's guiding principles and recommendations are a way forward within the context of our national historic landmark community for the continued maturation of a lively and active Central Business District, which includes Centennial Plaza, Guthrie Park, Swan Pond Park, and as well, connections to the Des Plaines Riverfront. As I have repeated on many occasions, Riverside, this place matters. Riverside is just not a place to live, it is a community. It has been that special place since Frederick Olmstead laid down his plan for this village in eighteen sixty-nine. Using this plan as a guidepost, Riverside will be able to continue to preserve and promote its heritage while moving forward to address the needs and desires of today's residents. While our history defines who we are, who we will become is defined by our future. Please join me in implementing the plan's objectives and achieving the community's vision for Riverside. Sincerely, Michael C. Gorman, village president. I use the word implementing, and I do that because chapter four of this plan, and again, during the public meeting, we talked a little about this, but during, chapter four of the plan is called implementation. And that chapter starts out by stating, "The success of Riverside CBD is the combined responsibility of the village staff, village leadership, businesses, community organizations, and residents. This chapter four provides a prioritized list of steps that should be undertaken within the next two years to begin implementation of the plan." Why within the next two years? Well, CMAP has a two-year commitment to stick by us with this plan over two years. It's part of the grant funding. They will be there to assist the residents and assist the village. They're not gonna do the work for us, but they're there to answer questions, give us guidance, be a sounding board. So it is my hope that implementation is embraced by the next village board and by the residents. And particularly the residents, because it's throughout the planning process, residents clearly articulated a desire to share the historical significance of their community with others and welcome visitors to spend time in the CBD. And again, this is not the village board's plan, this is the community's plan. At this one-year process, the residents expressed desire to see the water tower better utilized the plan's expanded role in architectural and design tourism. Concerned with how their community looks to Metro and Amtrak riders as they pass through the village, residents would like the aesthetics of the railroad corridor improved. In addition to the increased economic activity from out-of-town visitors, residents would like to spend more time and money in the village. They would like to patronize more retail and dining options, especially those catering to younger families. Expanded recreational opportunities is also very important to the residents. They envision better connections to the Des Plaines River, as well as reactivating the former Public Works Building as a recreation and community center. Those words are from the plan that were developed by CMAP with public input and with direct input from our steering committee. So these are not dictates for anybody to do these things. These are desires that are in the plan. If the next village board and the residents desire to pursue any of these things, speak up and speak up while we have somebody to help us for the next two years. So I encourage our residents and our, all of our village stakeholders to engage the village board in discussions on implementation. So that concludes my pontification on this plan, which I am very proud of, so thank you. And with that, I will turn it over to, unless anybody else wants to add anything about the plan, I will turn it over to village manager Sklera for his report.
All I have are two items. The first is just to inform the community that the masonry work at the train station continues even through the rainy period of late. The tuckpunting has begun, and the contractor is still on schedule to complete the work by the end of the month. And second, each year, the second week of April is dedicated to the men and women who serve as public safety telecommunicators. The Riverside Police Department Center employs four full-time dispatchers and four part-time dispatchers who are supervised by Sergeant Bill Gutcheck. I just wanted to recognize those individuals for their hard work and a special thank you for all that they do. That is all I have.
Mr. President. Peter, do you want to take a moment and just advise the community of the proposal that is out on the table to improve the lighting on the north platform of the train station so that everybody's aware, pay attention, and express their point of view?
The Village of Riverside was able to obtain a grant through the Department of Community and Economic Development or Opportunity, I forget the acronym, in which the platform lights on the north platform, we will be able to retrofit those lights and replace the mercury vapor lights with new, modern LED-type lighting. The, we were able to work with our electrician to have a mock fixture installed on the platform, so it was installed-
so it was installed earlier this morning, so it is available and it is on for anyone interested in looking to see what the light will be like once the fixtures are replaced. Our staff's hope is that we can move forward with the installation of the fixtures in the next week or two, so if there is any feedback that the board or the community would like to provide me, please feel free to either call me or email me at pscalera@riverside aisle.us.
Where on the station is that light?
It is third light.
So it's in the center?
It's right, closer to, towards the barber shop.
Good. So I would encourage, when you walk out the door, take a look at the north train station, give Peter your comments. Thank you, Peter.
You're welcome.
Lance Molina, Village Attorney.
No report.
No report, okay. Yes?
Just a question on that. Is it just the lighting on the platform?
Just the lighting on the-
Or does the lighting goes all the way down?
No, it would be, the grant would allow us to retrofit the mercury vapor fixtures on the platform.
So just under the canopy?
Under the canopy. There's ten lights in total.
Thank you. That concludes the reports. Moving on, the approval of the consent agenda. On the consent agenda this evening is the approval of the bills of April fifteenth, 2013, and approved Village Board of Trustees' regular meeting minutes of April first, 2013. Does any trustee require any item to be removed for further discussion? Seeing nothing, then I shall ask for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Reynolds, second by Trustee Shevitz. If you please call a roll.
Trustee Reynolds.
Aye.
Trustee Shevitz.
Aye.
Trustee Satchin.
Aye.
Trustee Valerie.
Aye.
Thank you, and the consent agenda is adopted. Moving on to the reports of the board chairpersons, finance, personnel, and preservation. Trustee Satchin, do you have any report?
There is no report tonight.
Thank you, Trustee Satchin. Moving on, Public Works, Transportation, and Utilities, Trustee Sells. As Trustee Sells is absent today, I will ask the village manager to please handle his items.
Okay. The first item under Trustee Sells' portion of the agenda is a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a contract with L. Marshall, Inc. in the amount of forty-eight thousand for Fire Station Two roof replacement. The roof of Fire Station Two on Pine Avenue has been leaking for the past eight years despite efforts to patch sections of the roof. To address the chronic roof leak, a roof replacement project was advertised for bid. Ten contractors submitted bids for the project. Two bidders, L. Marshall, Inc. and Crowweather Roofing and Sheet Metal, submitted the same low bid of forty-eight thousand dollars. Archon, the village's architectural project consultant, has submitted a letter recommending bid award to L. Marshall. Although both companies were very reputable and capable, Archon has based its award recommendation on, at least partly, L. Marshall's previous history in the Village of Riverside. In addition, the bidders were required to provide unit prices for unforeseen work or associated work that the village decided to have accomplished as part of the project once it became, once it's underway. These are commonly known as allowances. If the allowances are not needed or requested, the low project price of forty-three thousand will have been submitted by L. Marshall versus forty-six thousand, one hundred, submitted by Crowther. This project does appear in the 2013 capital budget in the amount of forty thousand. However, staff is confident that minimizing the use of allowances, that the project costs will be as close to the forty thousand budgeted as possible, and any overage can be covered by the capital fund.
Thank you, Village Manager Sclera. And with that, I would ask for a motion and a second to execute this matter.
I still shall.
Thank you.
Second.
So a motion by Trustee Shevitz, a second by Trustee Reynolds. Is there any discussion on this item? If not, then I would ask our village clerk to please call a roll.
Trustee Reynolds.
Aye.
Trustee Shevitz.
Aye.
Trustee Satchin.
Aye.
Trustee Valerie.
Aye.
Thank you, and that contract execution is approved. Next item, please.
The next item is a resolution authorizing the village manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Riverside and Riverside Brookfield High School District 208 for the sale of gasoline and diesel fuel. Under Article seven, Section ten of the Illinois Constitution, local government and school districts have the ability to contract or otherwise associate among themselves in a manner not prohibited by law or ordinance. The Intergovernmental Cooperation Act provides that any power or powers' privileges or authority exercised, or which may be exercised by a unit of local government or school district, may be exercised and enjoyed jointly with any other unit of local government or school district. So basically, we have the ability to work together. In an effort to improve intergovernmental cooperation, the village approached District 208 in March 2013 to inquire whether the district had any interest in purchasing fuel from the village. It currently purchases its fuel from a local gas station. The ability to purchase fuel from the village will allow the district to take advantage of the village's bulk rate, reducing annual fuel costs to the district. The village, in return, will receive a one percent admin fee, and the district is willing to provide access to the pool facility at the high school to our Parks and Recreation Department to use in conjunction with our summer camp. The term of the proposed agreement before you is for a period of one calendar year from the effective date with automatic renewal for successive one-year, one calendar year periods unless terminated by either the village or the school district with sixty-day notice.
Thank you, Peter. So I would ask for a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the village manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Riverside and Riverside Brookfield High School District 208 for the sale of gasoline, diesel fuel.
So moved.
Second.
So a motion by Trustee Reynolds, second by Trustee Valerie, is there discussion on this item? Trustee Satchin.
Do we happen to have an estimate of what kind of revenue we can expect from that one percent fee?
We do not, because the school hasn't been able to provide us with a concrete number on usage, or anticipated usage.
Okay.
How did we arrive that, in addition to one percent, the use of the pool facilities for Parks and Recreation?
The one percent was similar to looking at other municipalities that have intergovernmental agreements with their school districts and what fee they assess to the school districts. So it's really a number that was a stab in the dark, but-
The pool use, though, have you read that?
The pool use, what we did is the, we looked at the hourly rate that they charge for the pool, as well as the security fee that the district was going to be implementing this year, and we looked at what the cost to allow for our summer program to utilize the pools compared to what we hope we will receive as far as fuel purchase, and we kind of tried to find a number that was compromising to both parties.
Remember what that number was?
Well, originally, I was, I had proposed a two percent, but the school had asked to lower it to one percent in lieu of eliminating the security fee, the hourly security fee.
So do you know what the hourly security fee was?
It was twenty-eight dollars an hour, and I think it came out to about seven hundred dollars for the year.
Okay. Just curious, and is this, this is an annual contract?
Yes.
So we just heard Chief White soul a few minutes ago talk about he was hoping 208 would pick up seventy-five or eighty percent of fee for a officer.
Yeah, that's a discussion that we have had with the district in the past and one that we will continue to have with them.
Tied to purchasing fuel or-
No, that's separate.
Okay.
You can interrupt me if I'm incorrect. In the way of a little further background, our summer program used Riverside's pool last year, Riverside Brookfield's pool last year, with no charge.
They charged us fifteen dollars an hour.
Okay, they came to us to increase, now they want to increase their fee this year. So this fuel purchasing arrangement was sort out the table at the time, so Peter took that opportunity to not only avoid the increase from fifteen to twenty-eight dollars an hour, but to negate that in total for a reduced administrative fee on this agreement. So those things came together.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions. In Section five of the plan, it provides for a quarterly tabulation and billing to the school. I mean, is quarterly appropriate? Is monthly appropriate? What kind of float are we talking about here?
We did talk about it, and as far as a finance point, quarterly would make it easier for staff to process invoices, as well as for the mechanic who operates the fuel programming system to tabulate the information and provide it to us on a timely basis that we can then turn around and bill the school.
Without knowing the dollars involved here, I don't know how to respond to that exactly. I trust your judgment, obviously, but-
We're not talking, we're not talking high amounts.
Because to tabulate usage, how do we push a button? Tabulate, so I don't see where the demand on our time, whether you do it monthly or quarterly, I'm just, my only question was, why would you give them three months float on the money? If you've done the analysis-
It's, one, staff won't be spending as much time, because it does take time to process the invoices that we would have to forward to them, so by doing it quarterly, similar to the water bills, it can be run all at the same time, basically.
Thank you. Also, in Section five, what Riverside Brookfield High School has agreed to do is waive the security fee for use of its pool facilities.
Correct.
I would suggest, and again, I'm not part of these discussions, but I would suggest that the word "security fee" be broadened to include any and all fees of any description for use of the pool, because we're getting them to waive security fees, and tomorrow or the next board says, oh, no, we're not charging a security fee, we're charging a day-of-the-week fee. You understand where I'm coming from with that, so I would broaden that language to include it, if that is representative of your discussions.
Well, they will, we are still going to be paying the hourly rate or hourly fee. This is a fee that they have identified, that they are assessing to all users of any school facilities that are not 208 identified programs.
So it is not for waiving all fees for use of the pool?
No, this is just to waive the twenty-eight dollar, twenty-eight dollar an hour security fee that they were adding on top of the hourly-
Right, that was not clear.
Did they hire more security for those hours? Is that where that fee comes from, or is it just-
My understanding is that they, from our discussions, that they've hired a private company now to do that work, and they're trying to recoup the cost of that.
I commend you on reaching out to District 208 and trying to work these intergovernmental agreements. We're all taxing bodies, we need to work together. And I think District 208, if they were, if they learn anything, the best thing they could do is get as many residents, children into that school as they can through recreation programs, through different programs, early on, so people can see what they have there. Most of the people in this village pay their taxes to that school and don't even know what the inside of that school looks like. That school, when that building was built, it was sold to us that we would have access to it. I appreciate that, I appreciate them giving us access to it, and I would encourage them to continue to go along that way.
Well, I mean, I do have to say that Superintendent Skinkis has been easy to work with. He's open to any ideas that we bring forward to him. He's brought ideas to us as well, so I do feel that we do have a good working relationship with 208 that I hopefully will continue moving forward.
And one final question. On Section eleven, those are the insurance requirements, have those limits and types of coverages already been signed off on by the school, or do we have to have the school come back to us and say, we don't want these limits?
This agreement does have to go back before the school board.
Yes, I know that, but I mean, have you, you've obviously had discussions with-
The superintendent is comfortable with the language that is within this agreement.
I just didn't want them to come back and say, oh, two million's not going to work for us.
No.
Okay, good, thank you. I don't have any further questions? Any other discussion? Hearing none, I would ask the village clerk to please call a roll on this resolution.
Trustee Reynolds.
Aye.
Trustee Shevitz.
Aye.
Trustee Satchin.
Aye.
Trustee Valerie.
Aye.
Thank you, and this motion is approved, authorizing the village manager to enter into this intergovernmental agreement. Next thought, Madam Peter?
The next is a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute an engineering agreement in the amount of one hundred and fifty-three thousand with Christopher B. Burke Engineering LTD to conduct a comprehensive sewer system evaluation study. The village sewer system consists of about forty miles of clay and reinforced concrete pipe ranging in size from six inches to sixty-six inches in diameter. The system conveys sanitary sewage and storm water runoff through the village-owned trunk sewers to the MWRD-GC interceptor that runs along the Displanes River and First Avenue. The interceptor flows to the MWRD Stigney Water Reclamation Plant in Stigney. Many parts of the sewer system are old, perhaps a hundred years old, with limited capacity. During storm events, the system has been prone to surcharging, which causes street flooding and backups in residential homes. As the sewer system becomes older, the pipes are subject to deterioration and damage. To ensure the system operates as expected, a review of the system to identify deficiencies and establish a project priority list is essential to averting future problems. Burke Engineering has submitted the proposal before you to conduct a comprehensive evaluation of the sewer system, which will confirm existing capacities and identify system deficiencies likely to contribute to surcharging and associated problems. The evaluation report will be used to prioritize repair projects in association with sewer utility financial planning. The project was included in the approved 2013 fiscal year budget.
Thank you, Peter. So I would ask for a motion and a second on this resolution authorizing the village manager to execute an agreement with Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited in the amount of one hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars to conduct a comprehensive sewer system evaluation study.
If the motion, because our village attorneys haven't had an opportunity to review the contract before you for both this and the Scotswoods, if both motions, if the board desires, could be made upon village attorney sign-off, it'd be appreciated.
Perfect, so we will add that to my request for this motion, so-
So moved.
Second.
So a motion by Trustee Shevitz, a second by Trustee Reynolds, discussion, and we also have our engineer from Christopher Burke in the audience with us, who would be happy to address any questions. So, Trustee Satchin.
I see on page two where the areas are delineated, is that covering the entire corporate boundaries of the village?
Yes.
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 And I didn't notice a projected completion date on this study. I see where you guys want to get paid every month, but what, where, when is this study expected to be delivered to the village?
Orion, yeah, if you would please come up to the microphone and identify yourself so that our residents know who you are, so they see you around working on these things.
Hi, my name's Orion Gailey, I'm project manager for Christopher Burke Engineering and representative here for the Village of Riverside.
Do you want to address the trustee's question?
Sure. We anticipate, assuming we get approval, that it should be four to five months, but for sure by the end of this year, it'll all be completed. We had it broken out into three different stages there. Previously, we had given this proposal, I think, a year, year and a half ago, and budget was an issue at that point, so we had broken up into stages in case we needed to do it in three different stages. But at this point, I believe it's been budgeted already, so we're proposing to do the whole thing at once.
And I imagine that this is going to be water and sewer fund expense, the whole way?
Well, it's in the cap, right, water and sewer under the capital fund.
And just to reiterate again, I also have trouble with the way these boundaries are described here, but you are stating that this includes the entire municipal boundary of the village, because I don't see how we're picking up what's west of First Avenue here, and I can find a few other areas which I don't understand, but on your assurance-
Yes, and I think stage three, or however it's broken out there, says the rest of the village.
Well, it says remaining village east of Area Two.
Yeah, it says east of Area Two.
That's cutting off of everything west of First Avenue, it's cutting off some other things too.
Right.
So, do we have, I don't know, if we need to do anything further, Lance?
We'll button that up, because that's what, your price is to include the whole village.
And this is subject to your review, so that's perfect.
We can tweak the language there. I mean, as long as they understand it's for the whole village, we'll make sure the language is correct.
Yeah, because the area is delineated- Yeah, because the areas delineated there did not seem to encompass the whole village, so it prompted my question.
And the only reason why, because we did talk about that, and Orion and I and Ed did kind of go over the different areas and the stages, and it does include the entire village, because we wouldn't be doing one.
Correct.
Trustee Shevitz.
Did we get any other bids for this, Peter?
We did not, because we went through the bidding process to identify our village engineer, and Burke is our village engineer. As you recall, the scope of our bid for village engineering services did not include in their set or our, or their annual rate, any additional studies, which this is considered an additional study.
Okay, but why didn't we competitively bid this out to others as well?
Because they're the firm that we are going to be working with, once the needs have been identified and moving forward with projects as they come up on the capital plan.
So, so I... This is, if you don't mind me interrupting, this is considered professional services, akin to legal fees, whatever other professionals. So, we have retained them as we retain client toward adjournments and give them assignments. So, this assignment was given to them under our arrangement for them to be our village manager, village engineer.
So, any other out of scope engineering services are not competitively bid anymore? Or is that what I'm, am I to understand, or...
No engineering contracts are competitively bid.
They never, they haven't been.
It's, they probably touch on that better than me, but it's not, legally, you cannot competitively bid engineering contracts.
Just a question regarding the surveying. Does this incorporate the consideration of the Metropolitan Sanitary District's proposal to rebuild a interceptor that comes down First Avenue through the village and along the river?
This proposal is for all existing utilities?
The MWRD proposal that...
I know, it's on hold.
It's on, it's on hold, because they're, my understanding is they're currently reviewing the standard that they're going to be applying to that project, and until they've identified or set that standard, that project is not going to go forward. This is to look at our existing infrastructure. Some of that, I believe, does connect to the MWRD, so we'll look at those connections and identify any areas of concern.
Thank you. Any other questions for Orion? Anybody else? Orion, thank you. This item, as Peter mentioned, was included in the capital budget for the water and sewer fund. One reason we included this in that budget, in addition to the fact that the sewers need attention, one reason we did this was, as you were all called, the last time we had a stimulus program by the federal government, we all learned what the term shovel-ready means. This allows us to have shovel-ready projects for our sewer system. If money were to become available tomorrow, we could not even apply for any grant funding for this type of work. So, we have to unfortunately spend money to be shovel-ready. So I would encourage the village board, and with the help of our engineering firm, Christopher Burke, to keep us attuned to funding opportunities for this, for this work in the future. So, with that, we have a motion and a second on the floor. If there is no further discussion, I will ask village clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Reynolds.
Aye.
Trustee Shevitz.
Aye.
Trustee Satchin.
Aye.
Trustee Gallary.
Aye. Thank you, and this resolution is approved to execute the agreement with Christopher Burke. And the last item, Peter?
The last item is a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute an engineering agreement with, in the amount of $30,750 with Christopher Burke Engineering for engineering services associated with replacement of the Scotswood Road sewer main. The sewer main serving Scotswood Road from approximately the intersection of Scotswood and Coonlea to the intersection of Millbridge and Fairbanks has experienced significant deterioration during the past 10 to 15 years. The nine-inch sewer main is undersized, but the number of residents it serves is fractured throughout most of its length and has been subject to frequent flow restrictions due to tree root intrusion. The Department of Public Works does what it can with equipment available to keep the sewer main flowing, but there is little alternative beyond eventual replacement of the main. Included in the fiscal year 2013 budget is $165,000 for the engineering and replacement of the Scotswood sewer main. Burke Engineering has submitted an engineering proposal in the amount of $30,750 to facilitate sewer main replacement, which includes a project survey, design engineering, permit applications, construction observation, and post-construction services.
And with that, I will ask for a motion and a second to authorize the village manager to execute an engineering agreement in the amount of $30,750 with Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited for engineering services associated with the replacement of the Scotswood Road sewer main, subject to final review and approval by our village attorney.
So moved.
Second. A motion by trustee Shevitz, a second by trustee Reynolds. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, I would ask Kathy to please call the roll.
Trustee Reynolds.
Aye.
Trustee Shevitz.
Aye.
Trustee Satchin.
Aye.
Trustee Gallary.
Aye. Thank you, and this resolution is approved, authorizing signature of this agreement with Christopher Burke. Next, Peter, you are done?
I'm done.
Thank you very much. Next, public safety, health, and landscape, trustee Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. You have before you a resolution adopting the Village of Riverside Landscape Advisory Commission Landscape Master Plan. The village board in 1953 adopted Title II, Chapter 14 of the municipal code, creating the Landscape Advisory Commission, the LAC. The primary duty of the Landscape Advisory Commission is to prepare and recommend to the village board a master landscape and planting plan with respect to plantings within the park and parkway system, and plantings within the business districts and other public lands of the village. The purpose of the plan being to provide an overall planting scheme for all park, parkway, and other areas which comprise the master plan, showing each area's relative context and interrelationship to all other areas. The LAC, at their June 2011 meeting, established as a primary objective of the creation of the master landscape plan in accordance with LAC duties outlined in the municipal code. The LAC has been primarily focused on the master landscape plan project since that time. The major categories of the plan being developed by the LAC include the triangles, parks, and common areas, natural areas, public buildings, streetscape, and central business district. The master plan uses the village's GIS system to create and maintain detailed maps and data regarding triangles, parks, natural areas, commons, public building landscape, and the CBD streetscape areas. The plan will assist the Department of Public Works prioritize landscape maintenance, preserve the village's national historic landmark status, and help residents and the board appreciate the beauty of Olmsted's design. I therefore move to approve the resolution adopting the Village of Riverside Landscape Advisory Commission Landscape Master Plan.
Second. So I have a motion by trustee Reynolds, a second by trustee Shevitz. Before any discussion, if there is any, I would just ask trustee Reynolds, for the benefit of those who did not tune into our last meeting, would you just give a brief summary of the presentation the board received from the Landscape Advisory Commission on this plan?
Yes, they've really been working on this extremely hard, and I think the presentation that we saw at our last meeting bore that out, and I think there were many residents who were impressed, and folks at home who mentioned it to me afterwards. And really what it is, is a skeleton or a, an outline that will be fleshed out in future years with a variety of nodules that are put on the plan itself. The first one being the triangles, and they've completed that portion of the plan and presented that to us in totality the last time we met. It's so that the Public Works Department and the forester will have some kind of a master plan to operate from, so that they have a framework for anything that they're going to do and a reference going forward. There's been so many hours put into this plan by the LAC members who actually went out and physically took stock of all the trees in the village that are currently in the triangles. They looked at previous plans that were produced by a variety of folks that came before us and on whose shoulders we stand. The Mahaffey Report, the Karen's Kessler Report, Ad Infinitum, everybody who has had a hand in this, I think is proud to see it finally coming to fruition. And so, using the GIS system, I think was a real stroke of luck for us in terms of the technology that's currently available. And Ed may want to comment on this, but it's been a boon to not only their department, I think, but also to the LAC, because we can identify in plan form all the plantings and trees that are currently in place. And by comparing those with previous plans, we can know what was there originally, what blight has taken away from us, what we've lost in terms of overstory and understory. And I think this is going to be a real reference point going forward, and of course, it will have to be updated on a continual basis about every three years or so. As the Landscape Advisory Commission moves forward, they will now tackle all the other proportions that I spoke about, the parks and parkways and all the other areas that comprise village public lands. The triangles were a big one, and I think they, they've kind of sorted out all the bugs in the system, and I think they're moving quite well with this project now.
Thank you, trustee Reynolds. Is there any further discussion on this topic, which we had presented to us at our last meeting? If there is none, I would just like to, once again, thank the multi-year efforts of the Landscape Advisory Commission to bring this to this point, under the leadership of its current chair, Diane Lamontilla, and all of the individual members of the Landscape Advisory Commission. So with that, I would ask village clerk Kathy Haley to please call the roll.
Trustee Reynolds.
Aye.
Trustee Shevitz.
Aye.
Trustee Satchin.
Aye.
Trustee Gallary.
Thank you, and the motion to approve the Village of Riverside Landscape Advisory Mass, LAC Commission Landscape Master Plan is approved. Thank you. Trustee Reynolds?
The next item I have is a resolution authorizing the village director of Public Works to issue a landscape permit for a tree planting on public lands to commemorate Tree City USA Arbor Day. The Village of Riverside has been a member of Tree City USA since 2005. The tree plantings will help satisfy the village's Tree City USA membership requirements and promote tree planting within the village. The forester will celebrate Arbor Day with the fourth grade students at Ames Elementary School on Friday, April 26th, in the triangle in front of Ames, at South Coat and Nut All Roads. Students will help plant an ironwood tree to celebrate Arbor Day as a community and honor the efforts of Mary Henley. Mary made a donation to the village to plant a tree to help replace the trees that have been removed near Ames, near Ames School due to the Emerald Ash Borer infestation. The event will begin at 10:45 a.m. In addition to the celebration on Friday, the village will also collaborate with the Frederick Law Olmsted Society and Riverside Brookfield High School on their day of service to plant an additional tree at Patriots Park on Saturday, April 27th. The planting of a linden tree donated by Susan Casey, chairperson of the Recreation Commission, will begin between 11 a.m. and 12 p.m. I would like to move that we authorize the director of Public Works to issue a landscape permit for tree plantings on public land to commemorate Tree City USA Arbor Day.
Second. So I have a motion by trustee Reynolds, a second by trustee Shevitz. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, would you please call the roll again?
Trustee Reynolds.
Aye.
Trustee Shevitz.
Aye.
Trustee Satchin.
Aye.
Trustee Gallary.
Aye. Thank you, and that landscape permit is approved. Next item?
You now have before you a resolution to authorize the provision of commission cards for the auxiliary police corps members. The auxiliary police corps members have historically received police commission cards from the Village of Riverside, which appoints them and authorizes them to ride with Riverside patrol officers, assist them with special events, traffic control, flooding, and other events within village limits should the need arise. There are five auxiliary patrol officers who need commission cards requiring signatures of the village president and the village clerk. Kenneth Karadko, William Presbelski, Greg Saginich, Carl Basick, and Carl Choat. So I move that we authorize the commission of five auxiliary police corps members and the issuance of a commission card dated 5/1/13 through 4/30/14 to each of the above-listed auxiliary officers.
Second. So a motion by trustee Reynolds, a second by trustee Gallary. Chief Weitzel, do you have any comments on this item here?
No, they're, certainly are a valuable part of our department, no question.
What type of efforts do we, you make to try to expand this group here from the five? These five gentlemen have been with us for quite a while.
Yes, they have. Membership is an issue because of the state mandates for training that have changed for part-time officers. Why they're not part-time, because part-time means you get paid. Our auxiliaries are only paid a dollar, and that's for insurance purposes, so in case they're injured. But even the state training board has adopted strict, time-consuming requirements for their firearms training and their less-than-full police status. So, many of them have full-time jobs, they can't do the training at night. So they've had an issue with that, and it, also, our ordinance calls for the auxiliaries to either be a resident of Riverside or a property owner. So, they're really not attracting from outside the community per their own bylaws and the statutes, but they are, they are out there trying to actively recruit, but the training is really the major issue.
Which is the villagers' cost.
Yes, we, they, we include them, and if we get a new officer, the village has to pay that. But it's really the time, over the period of time, it's 240 hours. Now, that's allowed to go over a year or so, but that's a lot of time for a fam, if somebody has a full-time job, to give up. So, these individuals, they're already have that training, and some of them are grandfathered and didn't have that much training, but going forward, it will continue to be difficult.
I appreciate what you're saying. We've said before, these means the value these gentlemen bring to the villages beyond compare. We could not have some of these voluntary events that we have without these gentlemen helping out. I don't think that's all we're stating, chief.
No, it's not, especially in the large events that we have, the Arts Fair, the Fourth of July, the Third of July, and other events.
So with that, I would encourage you, and you're doing it anyway, try to figure something out to, you know, not lose these gentlemen and to increase this to, you know, younger folks. I know, I hear your problems, but I just want to make that statement, so thank you. Is there any other comments, questions? If not, would you please call the roll? I ask you to call the roll, please.
Trustee Reynolds.
Aye.
Trustee Shevitz.
Aye.
Trustee Satchin.
Aye.
Trustee Gallary.
Okay, and that resolution is approved. Next item, trustee Reynolds?
You now have before you a resolution to authorize the provision, excuse me, of commission cards for Brookfield Zoo police officers. The Brookfield Zoo Police Department has historically received police commission cards from the Village of Riverside, which authorizes them to effect arrests on Brookfield Zoo property should the need arise. The chief mentioned this earlier this evening. There are 13 Brookfield Zoo police personnel who need commission cards requiring signatures of the village president and village clerk. Chief George Hall, Lieutenant Barb Klisch, Sergeant Michael Grimm, Sergeant Lee Zeitlin, Sergeant Michael Pendola, Officer Albert Edwards, Officer Gary Setalak, Officer Tom Noga, Officer Michael Kruger, Officer Brandon Smith, Officer Tony Benegnety, I think?
Yes.
Officer Sakwan Golar, and Officer Stuart Strahl. So I move that we authorize the commission of the above-mentioned Brookfield Zoo Police Department members and the issuance of a commission card to each of the officers.
Second. So a motion by trustee Reynolds, a second by trustee Shevitz. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I would ask village clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Reynolds.
Aye.
Trustee Shevitz.
Aye.
Trustee Satchin.
Aye.
Trustee Gallary.
Aye. Thank you, and that resolution is approved. Thank you, chief. Trustee Reynolds, anything further?
That's all I have.
Next up, River Parks and Recreation, trustee Gallary?
I have one issue that I'd like to just bring up to the board and see if they'd like to go any farther with it. Before our last election, a letter went out to the stu, the parents of District 96 students, and it was in our packet, but I'll briefly read it to you. During school hours on Tuesday, April 9th, each school in Riverside District 96 that serves as a polling location will have a plaincloze off-duty police officer located in the voting area. Though we have not experienced a school safety incident on election days in the past, Dr. Lambertson and the school board believe it is prudent to elevate the support for school safety on Election Day. You know, at first glance, you look at this and, you know, I'm not going to debate whether schools should be used as election polling places or whether we should have armed guards at school, but after that, after reading this and then reading Chief Weitzel's letter to Dr. Lambertson, it really worried me that what was happening here is a very dangerous situation, and that is plaincloze armed police officers in our schools without prior knowledge or consent. armed police officers in our schools without prior knowledge or consent of our police force. First, they're plainclothes, I don't see what kind of deterrent a plainclothes police officer would have, but the fact that, you know, anyone can go into the school and vote and see a man standing in the corner with a suit with a gun and dial 911, and then we have an incident. Or if an incident, God forbid, should occur, our police officers arrive, and they're met on the scene with people that they had no idea were even there in the first place. So, you know, my question is, should we be looking at an ordinance that clearly states that if off-duty police officers are used for security in public buildings, that A, the request goes before our police chief first? So, we would use our off-duty police officers? That would obviously take care of the issue of one officer walking into a building and not recognizing another officer? So, A, using our officers first, and have, use and consult the police chief and the police department before this happens? Yeah. I know you have a good relationship with District 208, but, you know, I could see a dance in 208 that they feel that they need a police officer if something like that happens. I just, it just worried me, and I just thought it would be interesting for us to discuss it.
I'd extend that to private security as well. I mean, why stop at off-duty police officers? Should we logically extend it, think of extending it beyond that? I mean, the issue, and I know what you're saying, the issue, I think the issue that you're getting at, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, is having an armed individual, whether they're licensed to carry a firearm or not, can be disconcerting. Seeing that in an out-of-context space can be disconcerting to somebody. If I heard you correctly, right? Show up to vote, you see somebody looking around, maybe you see a bolt or what you think is a gun, and yes, your first instinct is probably correct to dial 911. So, do we need to extend that even beyond a security force? Is it private security or off-duty police officer? Are there any other conditions? Yeah, or that might mean that part of your...
I thought about, you know, the Fourth of July, because we have an off-duty police officer that works the gate, but, you know, there's coordination between, obviously between the Recreation Department, RAW, they have an officer, and there's obviously communication there. Private, I'm trying to think of what private, you know, I'd be open to, I just don't want, I just want to make sure that our police chief and our law enforcement personnel know what's going on in our village before they're surprised. And I think this was a grave lack of judgment that could have resulted in terrible luck.
Could we ask the chief to chime in here and tell us how you think this should be handled?
Particularly since you inserted yourself into this when you became aware of this, you have some background right now about what's in place. You may have some thoughts on this subject regarding what other municipalities do.
Yeah, I found out about it through one of my staff members that brought me a letter that apparently was sent home to District 96 students or posted on their website. I didn't know about it, it was a short period of time. My first read it, my concern was that they were hiring off-duty police officers, and they may have not even been hired, they may have been volunteers, that were working in the school. And what would happen if our 911 center received a call of a man with a gun or disturbance in the school? So, then my uniform patrol officers would be responding to a District 96 school, going in the front door, they weren't Riverside police officers, they weren't armed, my officers might mistake an off-duty police officer as the offender, and we could accidentally shoot another police officer, or there could be exchange of gunfire when they're both good guys here. So, I sent an email to the superintendent asking him if he could explain it, you know, just update me as to what was taking place, and he told me that it was being handled by Dr. Lampiris, I think was their name, and that they were parents of District 96 students, so some off-duty Cicero police officers, I think, a Brookfield police officer who volunteered to provide security there, plainclothes, armed. I didn't have an objection to the theory of that, my only objection was that we weren't notified. By the time I got the response, I think it was a day before the election, I put out an email to my officers, and I met with the supervisors and let them know, there are officers that are going to be in District 96 schools unarmed or armed in plainclothes. So, if we should get a call there, you should be aware of it. But that was my overriding, I could easily see a confrontation taking place where we don't know that this individual in a suit and tie or a sport, you know, jacket is even a police officer.
What's the usual protocol in that situation? So, if I'm a plainclothes officer or an off-duty officer from another district, and I go into your district to do exactly this, because it's my kid's school, do I usually check in with you? Is it a courtesy that I check in?
I've never had that situation, but if they're acting in the official capacity of their office, they almost always stop by and notify, just on a criminal investigation, say, for example. A District 208 almost always hires Riverside police officers for their sporting events, as many of you may know, for their dances. We always, they never hire plainclothes officers, it's always a uniform police officers. You know, the grade school's a different level, they don't really have that many problems with their dances and stuff like that, but I know of no other time that I've faced this. And the other, my counterparts in my neighboring suburbs have not, they haven't faced that issue either, or they weren't aware of it, they said.
Is there a specific action that you'd like to recommend to the board in cases like this?
Well, I had discussed it with the manager, and, I mean, my first intention was to write a letter to both 208 and District 96, asking them to please notify us, maybe 72 hours notification if they're going to do that type of event, saying that 208 has never done that, I don't want to say they ever have, because they have not, but I would like to receive a prior notification, because if I didn't, and there was a confrontation, as the police chief, they would be holding me accountable for that confrontation there and for not knowing why there were unarmed or armed police officers in that school. And if my answer is, the school never told me, I don't think that's a good enough answer. So, that's why I reached out to the superintendent and asked him if he could clarify it.
Chief, in a situation where you were notified, and you put out an email or you informed all of your officers that there could be somebody in this situation, your officers don't necessarily know what this person looks like, correct?
That's correct. They would not know the, probably these termites.
Doesn't that still beg the question, you know, what happens in a confrontational situation like that?
Yes, it would. So, you know, I don't know legalities, if an ordinance could be written, I suppose we either have to be provided a photo of the individual, or they would have to meet them, you know, our day shifter, afternoon supervisor would have to see them, because in today's world, I would really, it would not be uncommon for a voter to go into that school and see if the officer didn't hide his gun good enough, and his gun is hanging out, and the minute they walk out of that school, they get on their cell phone, and they call us, and they say, "There's a man with a gun at Hauser." And then, if that call comes in, you can bet that not only is the Village of Riverside responding to that call, so is probably the Village of North Riverside and maybe Lyons to assist. I don't think anybody would know who those people are.
Plus, we should, you know, if they say they're going to bring in in plainclothes or whatever, they would have to show up with their credentials.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, you know, first consult with you and make sure that they're legitimate.
Absolutely. That they're full-time certified police officers, you know, not part-time or...
They should be, exactly, they should be.
They should just be uniformed, because why have a plaincloth?
It's not very much of a...
You know, I only know what I read in the letter that went out to the parents, I don't...
Is there a protocol with respect to private businesses in town who may use security services? Are you advised when? I don't know who does, or maybe they do and you don't know.
No. The only one I have been advised in the past is the banks, if they hire, but they're uniformed, they're not plainclothes.
But are you advised of that?
Yeah, they notify us that they've hired Brink Security or something, they have a uniform officer, but that's a courtesy they give us.
And it's done without bill of orders.
That's correct.
So, maybe two things, I mean, I enjoy you right on with this point. I guess at this point, I would prefer to see through chief's endeavors with the school districts, and that's who we're aware of now, have that discussion and figure out how to make sure you're in the loop and keep the village board ordinance on it this for timing. Also, there's a bill in the legislature, who knows if it's going to work, but there's a bill in legislature right now to not allow schools to have polling places any longer. It's put forth by Riverside's very own Judy Baritpenka is one of the movers behind that. There's opposition to that, of course, by the recorder, county recorders against that. He's points, where else are we going to put the polling place? But there is legislation out there moving its way through the assembly, so this may become moot at this particular point. So, let's monitor that legislation, and in the meantime, you know, you continue your contacts and try to head this off in the future, because it can maybe work for them for elections, maybe they'll do a dance, you know, so you ought to address that.
I respectfully agree with what you're saying, but I also think that we should protect ourselves, protect our police chief, and protect our village by having that codified. So, if this cannot happen again without proper notification, proper verification of credentials, and that's proper safety, that's my feeling, so that's...
Anything further? If not, do you have anything else, Joe?
No.
I had a question I wanted to ask you. At the last meeting, when we talked about the forester of District County and the dog park over there on First Avenue and Cirmac, you had mentioned that Dog Stewardship Group will be meeting on April 11th. Susan Casey, in her individual capacity as a Riverside resident, is a member of that group. Did you hear if that meeting took place right now?
I have not talked to her since.
Yeah, okay.
She does have frequent updates on the Facebook page, but I have not spoken to her.
Okay.
I'll be with her on Monday.
Good, oh, that's right. Thank you. All right. And next is building, planning, and zoning, trustee Sussman, who is not with us. Do you know there are any items?
No.
No, thank you. And public relations, economic development, and open government, trustee Shevitz?
Nothing this evening.
Nothing this evening, thank you. We will now move on. Last item is an executive session. We will be adjourning for an executive session to cover the topics of litigation, collective negotiation, sale or lease of property owned by the village. We will not take any final action at all in the executive session, so we will not be reconvening in open session. So, with that, I would ask for a motion and a second to adjourn to executive session, not to reconvene.
So move. Second.
So, motion by trustee Satchin, second by trustee Reynolds. Thank you. If you please call a roll.
Trustee Reynolds.
Aye.
Trustee Shevitz.
Aye.
Trustee Satchin.
Aye.
Trustee Valerie.
Thank you. The meeting is adjourned.